is going to be very interactive. And so, one of the first pieces of interaction we're going to have is asking everybody to move into the center aisle. Okay? So you can't leave here today saying, "We didn't engage you and have you do anything." First thing, smoke it. We ask you to get up and move into the center aisle. Center aisle and front row. Thank you very much for your compliance. My name is Gregory Davis, and I'd like to welcome you to Urban Impact at Emerald City Bible Fellowship. This is an organization that has been providing services for families in the Rainier Valley since 1997. The president and pastor of the church is Harvey Drake, and his wife Andrea Drake have been at the helm, making what you see here a reality. I'm a member of this church, so I'm very happy to welcome you. We have a very important conversation going on tonight, and I'm sure you picked up on it, and that's why you're here, parenting in a violent world. There are a couple of people that we want to introduce you to who are serving as our kind of host organizations. When, after introducing them, what I want to do is to hear from each of you to find out who you are, what organization you're representing, and why you are here. We'd like you to try to be brave, okay? Because I look around the room, hmm, it might be a little tough for some of us, but I'm going to make the request. Because we want to know who's here and why you're here. But first, I want to just give some, a shout out to a young lady who was with the Administration on Children and Families, Jack Hult, who was one of the host organizations. So let's give her some appreciation. The other gentleman that I want to let you know who is here is Patrick Patterson, and he's, he's here, relative to President Obama's fatherhood clearance house. Patrick is over here, so let's give him some appreciation. And of course, our moderator for the evening, Terrence Lewis, season of life, who's going to be taking over the panel process. Let's give Terrence some appreciation. So what we'd like to do is just kind of start here and just ask you, I'm inclined to hold the mic, because I know, but, but no, I'm going to re-.
Good try. Good try. Good try.
That's going to be a little too fast. So I'm just going to ask you all to share, share your name, your organization, and why you're here.
My name is Michael Hunter. Our organization is Heart to Heart Action. And we're here because we've been building relationships with other entities in our community that are reaching families. And so that's why we're here.
You got one applause. All right.
Hi, my name is Nature Carter-Buddy, and I am here as a community organizer, and then also too with the Cis Network. And we work with young African-American girls in the community, the Cisay population, and that's commercially sexually exploited children. And so that's why we're here.
Good evening, I'm Don Ritter. And.
Hey, young man. I coached him in basketball. He was good, that's why he's alive. I'm founder of Inside Out Training and Consulting, and founder of All Parents' Y'all Committee Advisory Council, still for social justice. And I want you to pray for the two young men that were shot in Olympia. One young man had ten bullets in his back, and he's alive. And he started to get his lower extremities to move right over, and God started moving his legs and things. He dove on the shot here, and the bullet tried to burn out the back, so just pray for those young men.
My name is Stefan Thomas. I am an attorney. I work for the King County Prosecutor's Office. I work in the domestic violence.
Hi, my name is Victoria Thomas, and I am a PhD student at the University of Washington. I'm currently working for a new center just opened, the Center for Communication, Difference, and Equity. And we are partnering with the Boys and Girls Club here in King County, and we're doing a lot of tutoring down there, as well as programs. So I'm here to get a little more insight of what our children need in this community.
Good evening, folks. My name is Dexter Ferris, and I'm here to support my mother, the attorney, and our representative.
Hi, I'm Michelle Mitchell, and I'm a husband pastor of a church called Lord House Fellowship Church. I'm a member of our church. We have a counseling center called the Weathered Life Advocacy Ministry of Families. And we go into the schools, we do advocate coaching, parent engagement. So I'm just here to get more information about how I can help our kids.
Good evening, my name is Shanna Telford, and although I've been working with women for 20 years, today I'm here to parent.
Hello, my name is Paul Potters, which might look a bit like, "Get it up."
Right, right.
But this is actually my former church. Believe in the work that Pastor Harvey has done in this city. And I'm also from the Rainier Valley, born and raised in Seattle. Right here, as a president of a local nonprofit, I'm an urban family. We specialize in working in high-risk communities. One of our flagship programs is out of the Crescent Point Apartments. And it's neighborhood intervention. It's, we do several, we have four basic strategies that all work in that apartment community to mitigate the risk factors there. And so, and then also, two years ago, my wife and I also founded a training consulting business known as the Murders 260. So we have upwards of 19 years of experience working in the field of high-risk youth, and we offer training for gang intervention and crisis, crisis intervention as well. So thank you, students.
Lewis died, died in his life. What I do is, only about five days a week, I spend time inside Green Hill School, highest juvenile national security, actually all of the cities. Basically, I call myself the Hope Builder. So bringing hope to these young men, to letting them know that transformation can happen, life change, provide reentry support. We make it tangible. We don't just talk about get out of gangs and all that stuff. We provide jobs by mental health, provide those things that they can start seeing that there's hope. I'm in churches every day, and I'm here because I'm concerned, black man, I grew up in the South, and I don't want to see what happened in my community. The reason why I don't want to see that, I don't want to see that happen here. So I'm urban with this pain of seeing a black man in the system every day. So I'm going to listen to the community, let's do something, and reroute this school with prison pipeline, because we can change it. We just got to reroute it, so thank you.
That's one of the people who's showing you the mic too.
There you go.
You don't care about Mike, look.
I'm actually one of the panelists here. I'm a parent, advocate for youth. I am here to share not only just my personal experiences of the love of a foster child violence, but also just to speak. I founded an organization in my San Antonio called the Casey Project. And my aim is just to, number one, I want to bring more awareness about youth violence, and also find some just anti-violence.
Good evening, my name is Nikki Baller. And I am on staff at Seattle Community Police Commission, and Global Community Engagement and Communication Specialist, leader of the civilian oversight body that is addressing police reform.
Good evening, my name is Earl Wright. I'm retired deputy director of correction. I'm here, as an interested and concerned community member, and I'm also here to find some new rooms to play in community.
Hi, my name is Kalashna Cross, and I am the chairperson of the African-American Advisory Council for youth, to try to build communication between the community and the Seattle Police Department. And I am here actually because anybody who knows me know I love kids. And I have, I am a foster mom, I am a kinship mom, I am a mom that just, kids come spending nights, never go home for 20 years, you know? But my, my daughter-in-law is 26 years old, I have a five-year-old granddaughter. But I have, I'm very proud of a 19-year-old goddaughter that I brought home, I literally brought home, when she was four months old. And she's 19 now, and a beautiful girl. She's a manager at, on her job, and just got her license yesterday, and I'm very proud of her. And, and I start to think about her, okay, be great, I'm going to go. Then I also have a five-year-old nephew, my ex-husband's family. I brought home five days old in the hospital. And he's five years old now, but I helped give him a doctor now, he lives in the community, also living today. And so, very passionate about these kids, and so I'm happy to be here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Akia, and I'm actually visiting from Oakland, California, and yeah, for a few days. But I'm the founder and director of a youth organization called Lightly, and it supports girls and empowering themselves through various avenues of self-care, through leadership, and really hopes to like, help prevent them from going down routes that aren't, you know, as good for them, so.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Monica Matthews, and I too am here, first and foremost, as a mother of a 21-year-old black male, who is going into junior year at Central Washington University. And watching his friends, some of them die, some of them be locked up, and watching my own son go through his own struggles too, and how to best support that, it gets harder the older he gets. And so, I'm here because of that. And also, I'm the founder and executive director of the Life Enforcement Group. We have programs within several Southeast Seattle schools. Young Queens is one of them, Personal Development Program for Young Ladies, and Noten Road, which is a college prep program for our young people. So I'm very concerned about this community. I'm from Chicago, I've been here 20 years, reside in the Central District of Timon, and in the South End for the other kids. So I'm very concerned about our youth in this community.
My name's, my name's Dawn, and I'm representing myself tonight. I've been involved in this community for, for 15 years. This is one of my own churches. And so, you know, I'm an educator hard, I did that for 30 years. I only taught in urban settings. And I, I'm just here because I, I have heart for this community. I'm deeply concerned about father issues. And so, I'm here because this is an important conversation.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mahalika Valores. I am an auntie, community member, and currently a social worker at Child Protective Services, so the frontline, knocking on doors being cut out. But I care about families. I'm also a great sister. My brother was a part of parents, got 106.
Hi, good evening. I'm Terry Hayes. I'm with the Seattle Human Services Department, but I'm here for me.
Hi, I'm Nancy Nelson. I'm a New Zealand Christian church, which is in Helmand City, and I'm very interested in the topic and hoping to share with the church.
My name is Michael Meara Smalls. I grew up in West Seattle High Point, have been living and working in the city for three years. For work, I'm central network director of Seattle Violence Prevention Initiative. And I'm here to make sure that we can all begin to network a little more, and we can just figure out some of the things that are already on the table, and figure out the low-hanging fruit, and let's at least get that off the tree. And, and before we get into these big, deep strategic plans. So I just want to touch down with some people and figure out some stuff.
Good evening, my name is Tonya Horace. And I am here in several capacities. I'm here as a mother of first, many kids, and I share a lot of the stories happening with, with, watching an older son, 27-year-old son, grow up and make choices, situations, and other things that landed in his systems that he basically had no control over. But having been advocating for him and watching him, I don't have to see him behind bars, I don't have to go visit him in jail, I don't have to hear him on the run across country because he can't find his way back to rectify whatever it is that he's done, or whatever choices that he's made. So I'm here in that capacity because he has brothers and sisters. And beyond that, I am a domestic violence, sexual assault advocate. I've been doing this work for over 15 years. I started in mainstream agencies, and I recognize the differences in terms of what our community could give them services, and how well we would or would not be served. And so, because of that, I created an agency among some of the African-American sisters that came from dominant agencies called the Side of Task Force. And we are tasked with educating our community, providing intervention and prevention around domestic violence and sexual assault, whether in churches, schools, community settings, on the streets. I'm also here in the affiliation with the Cis Network, dealing with commercially exploited youth. And so, that's really the work that's going on. And I'm also working in capacity with Seattle Youth Violence Prevention Initiative, running girls groups from Central Seattle. Among our programs, Right Child, which is a culmination of programs that I've been running, is called The Bomb, which is the beauty of my blackness. And that is a program that was designed to help our young ladies understand that they are brilliant, they are beautiful, they are capable. It's also one to cover domestic violence programs, sexual assault programs, because many of us know, you cannot go into our community and say, "Oh, we got this domestic violence program, we should come to, so we can help, we can help you." Because they're like, "Really? It don't work with wrong folks, it's definitely not workable for you." So for me, trying to figure out a language that I could speak, that they could hear, and they would respond to, and be willing to be participants of, and come out successful. So we're going into our second, Mr. Smalls and the City of Seattle, other folks who are going into our second session, and we're looking to have some great outcomes as our young ladies understand, you know, red flags, boundaries, and what they're doing if they are in those situations in which they're going to get their mark.
Hi, my name is Eli Graham. I'm here visiting my brother, but I still have four grown sons, and I do have some grandsons that are about to come up. So I'm just here to get some information and.
Yes, my name is Eli Graham, and I'm here because I'm afraid I have a 14-year-old daughter that would kind of learn something, like how to protect herself while she's out there. And I think this is the place that I may get some of that knowledge, and I think I think it might make right now.
Hi, everybody. My name is Charlotte Farias, and I'm here in a few different capacities, one as a father of teenagers. Growing up as a teenager here in Seattle, I remember driving while black, getting pulled all the time, different things. So our ministry is Spiritual Western Ministries, Pastor Spiritual Western Church. And we are looking to bridge the gap, or there's a gap where these kids from high school think that if they don't go to the one school, they're not going to college. And so, I'm here to try and, you know, figure out a way to help with that situation. But therefore, because the D1 schools out there, you can go to college and get scholarships and all kinds of internet, do again. All the other schools, there are all kinds of schools out there for us, you know, even after, even if we kind of mess up during high school, we can still make it to college and do where it works.
I'm Kristen Ryder. I just started my ninth year as a speech language therapist at Narson, so I'm here because I want to find out more, starting to be more ideas that these are stacked.
Hello, I'm Angelique Davis. I'm here in two capacities. The first is as a parent of four, the oldest being 16, almost 17, and is two. So like all parents, have a lot of concerns for them, for their ones, for their boy. And the second is, in my professional, professional capacity, I'm a professor of political science and law, and I'm working on a book project, with a woman walking who lost her son due to police violence. But I'm collecting stories of women, black women who lost their children due to police and criminal violence, and writing about the politics of black, other than United States. So I think that's really close to my heart.
I'm going to be seeing the story columns, and what I do for work is I own insurance agents. My husband has it right now, and help a friend who's been a gentleman. He owns a funding company, but we're actually, we'll do for life and for parents, parents who are 18-year-olds and 13-year-olds. But we've also had several kids kind of come through our home, mostly boys. Many of the women in my family do not have a father living in the home, so my husband's kind of their uncle slash dad. And we're just concerned, our family personally has been touched by violence, but also, we live on West Hill and Skyway, and so maybe guys know where that's at. That neighborhood is just constantly being ravaged by violence. I drove in the CD Central District, so it's nothing new, but I'd like it to be something that we don't have to discuss all the time. So that's why we're here, very excited by parents, and want to make these connections and add to the conversation a little bit, so thanks.
My name is Davis Solis. I'm here in this same topic, and here to support parents as members.
I'm Claudia Goldsmith. I'm the Seattle House Secretary, I'm a QB donor over at McHolly. This past summer, two of our youth were murdered, so in that special capacity, I'm there, to kind of always support the families that I work with. Personally, I have an 18-year-old daughter, and this past summer, she has attended four memorials for her friends, and I'm real saddened by that, she's come on the inside. So just trying to find out, both professionally and personally.
Hi, my name is Jen Kajehan. I work with Claudia, the Seattle House now 30, I'm a community builder at Rainier Vista. So I'm here to learn and connect so that I can help support the families in Rainier Vista. I work at Icon for many years, so.
Good evening, my name is Martin Ullbliss. And I'm actually a member here at Emerald City Bible Fellowship. It was just a happenstance, because we have our worship practice on Thursdays, and so I walked in, and I was like, wow, there's a lot of people here for worship today. And then I saw that it was a town hall. So although I specifically come from the town hall, I am new to the Seattle area, I work for Casey Family Program. And the cities, or the issues and challenges that are happening here in Seattle are also happening in Arizona, near Arizona. And so I believe this is my community, all the life I do. And although I wouldn't be able to stay, I'm sure that there will be some positive informational things that have mattered, so thank you for your time.
So for those of you who didn't catch the instructions, who wanted to hear your name, your organization, and why you're here. My name is Mark Otero, and this is Brandon Terrance.
Hi, my name is Guy Anthony Carroll. I'm a board member for ARBA, also a member of this church, of this community. I have a hero daughter, I've raised two daughters, single dad. I'm here because I'm interested to, to understand why is it that our government has all this information, documents, and studies for over the years of how our children have had to suffer and endure racism and biases in our schools and our communities? And although they have all this information, nothing has truly been done to change anything. And it's like, folks are kind of getting desensitized, our children are getting angry because their parents are telling them to do well, and to stay strong, and have faith in, in God, but nonetheless, society hasn't changed. And our government seems to support this act of, I don't know what would be the word for it, discrimination, institutionalized discrimination. As a child, I've endured it, and I'm overpaying it, and I yet endure it. But at the same time, I don't think that our children, children should have to go through this. And our government, no. It's not like it's a secret. It's not like they don't have the information or data to, I mean, they've done studies. I mean, we've done studies with George Mason University, with the Connor Peterson, the beautiful safe place for you here in Rainier Beach. I mean, I've seen how they can collect this information, and I've seen how they can utilize this information to make a difference in other communities. But for some reason, all around the United States, our communities are not growing, and they're not profiting, our children are not overcoming, or the system is not putting things in place for them to become stronger, or for us to have the tools necessary to undo what has been done in their lives. And I'm just, I'm like anyone else. I'm just wondering, what is it, what's going on? Are we not, you know, are we not valuable enough as, as a people, that our, and our children are not valuable enough as children of the United States, of America, those who they pledge to this flag, and yet they are ignored, yet they are discriminated against? And yet, they still need help? So I just want to know what's going on.
Good evening, my name is Zach Davis, and I was providing a few of my statements. I'm a family education coordinator for Blood and Experience Center, or specifically the Family Resource Center on South Dakota.
So just for your information, I just had your first workshop, okay? And all these people here who are representing all these organizations, speaking truth. My name is Gregory Davis again, and I actually during the day worked for Casey Family Program. And one of the things we're trying to do is get young people out of foster care. We know that as a result of being in foster care, young people suffer from trauma, at twice the rate of US war veterans. And that's kind of the next step to this violence piece. By night, I am chair of the Rainier Beach Action Coalition, heard the brother talk about ARBA. And one of the things that we're looking to do is bring the restorative justice movement to Rainier Beach at the five schools that we have, so that we can have peace circles to impact the things that happen in the neighborhood. So thank you very much. Why don't you give yourselves a hand? Appreciate you all, seeing you here. A couple of housekeeping things. The bathrooms are out the door to your right. We also have some sheets that we need you to sign, and they're publicity releases, because this is a situation where we are wanting to do photographs and promote it. We also have some snacks out there, so feel free to get up and take advantage of those. You'll notice at the front table that we were handing out these note cards. And so, these are intended for you to write down questions that we want to be able to ask the panel. In fact, can the folks who are here, who are on the panel, come, come up and take your seat as we prepare for that particular part of the program? The other thing that we want you to do is to use these cards for, is to write down ideas, okay? And we don't want just any old, any old idea, we want a rich idea that's going to be able to move this issue. So we want to make sure that you do that. Yes, ma'am? Sure. Thank you. So what we have in store tonight, as you can see, is we have a panel that is going to be talking about their particular experiences around this topic. And then we're going to have an opportunity for audience participation, to, to ask the panel questions, to kind of cite your truth, cite your facts that you may know. And Terrence is going to be leading us through this portion. I think I've kind of covered all the bases, and so what we're going to do now is just have Mr. Patterson up here kind of talk about, you know, a little bit more of why we're here, kind of what the national landscape is that kind of brought this to Seattle, so.
Okay. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. It's funny that every place that I've gone, and I have on Nike shoes, they're always on the table. Now I have on a boot.
That's a Nike shoe.
It's a Nike shoe. It's a Nike shoe. It's a Nike shoe.
My name is Patrick Patterson. I represent a couple of things tonight. One is, I'm a son. I'm a brother. I'm a nephew. I'm an uncle. And I grew up in South Carolina, which is a little different from Seattle, Washington. A slight little. But I got a homegirl here. A white girl, okay, so I'm going to stay. I grew up in neighborhoods where you either play ball or you got involved in the game. One of y'all, if you did both, you weren't going to be here. For me, professionally speaking, this is an area of interest because I still have friends to this day that are just getting out of prison. I'm forty-one. So, that's personally, I am. I'm a father of two daughters. My wife and I have been married eighteen years. I want them to marry somebody good. Are y'all following that? I want them to be able to be raised in a neighborhood where they're safe. And so, as a part of our work with the government, I do represent the president's father in Clearhouse. And in that capacity, we have the benefit and opportunity to travel the country and work with programs that work with families. Is everything fair and equal? No, it's not. Is this a place that we can start? Yes, it is. Just about two months ago, Terrence was invited to Baltimore where we had this first conversation our parents had about a year. It just so happened, truthfully, we planned this meeting probably in January, that the Freddie Gray situation had popped off. And so, it was a real town hall where we had parents who were really concerned about when they're in the custody of the authorities, they still aren't safe. When they are walking to school where there aren't crossing guards, these kids still aren't safe. And so, it was our first chance to really have a public conversation about what's really going on. Because Terrence, and I got to just give Terrence a shout, I've known Terrence for eight years. Whenever he comes to Washington, D.C., he says, y'all got to come to Washington State. And so, he was in Baltimore for that conversation and he made it point blank, clear. They banging on here too. And they really need you guys to see and have a part in the conversation. So, I want to just publicly appreciate you, Terrence, for being in the back. So, for us, what was really noteworthy was that the government, we've been sending reports, we've been saying this, sometimes they have to see it to believe it. And so, they saw Baltimore. And so, with Terrence's input, we're here, this is our second one. We have one more that's going to be in Philadelphia next week. And plans on not only just having conversations, but try to gather folks globally to provide some solutions. The other thing that has happened is that people who are from the same parts of town have not connected. And so, the goal is, we're going to get on a plane hard that you guys who don't know each other will connect because there is no one person who's going to make this thing go away. It's going to take the community to make that happen. And so, that's our priority, that's our main focus in doing it. I want to recognize a few people before I pass the mic. One is Darrell Freeman. If you raise your hand, Darrell. Darrell is from South Philly, another area where they're doing a lot of things that people don't talk about. But he's part of our Fathers Incorporated team and is helping to gather information from tonight's meeting as well. The second person is Jen McHenry, which I think she's, Jen is downstairs. She was the person who welcomed you guys upstairs. Nicole Paxton, if you raise your hand. She's with our team as well, does a big job of making sure we capture everything that's been discussed. And then Wendy, don't hurt me. Say your last name.
Good.
Say again. Lubret is part of our team as well, helping us to gather information from these meetings. So, our goal tonight is to not be scripted, to not be poetic, but to keep it real. She said, huh. So, that's why we're here and I'm excited to be here and hope that we have a good conversation tonight. Terrence, you want to take the mic?
Yeah, sure. Everybody doing okay so far?
Yeah.
All right. Again, I just want to thank you all for coming out really at such a short notice. Again, as Patrick said, I went out to Baltimore two months ago when they had the first town hall on parenting in a violent world. And it was amazing, some of the stuff that they were talking about, you know? And we hear about violence here in Seattle, but, you know, we had one guy that got up and was talking, and he talked about preparing his son at the age of two, to where he hear gunshots, just stop, fall, hit the ground wherever it is he's at, you know? And so, we have it here, but on a different level than what they have it in Baltimore. And it's so intense back there that sometimes folks back there forget about up here. And so, and that's the reason why I wanted to make sure that they came up here. And that's the reason why we wanted to make sure we passed the mic to let our friends in Washington, D.C. know who's in Seattle doing some of the same work that's happening in D.C., trying to impact their families and their kids. So, again, as Gregory said, you guys should give yourselves a hand for being out here tonight on a Thursday night. And so, what we're going to transition to now, my wife's not going to introduce herself, but my wife Heidi and my two daughters just came in from the back. They had a volleyball game. But my wife back there, Heidi Henderson Lewis. And my daughter Destiny, say hi Destiny. She's shy. And then my daughter Adia back there, she's far from shy. So, what we're transitioning to now is we're going to let the panel go ahead and introduce themselves. And we do have a couple of pre-screen questions for the panel. What we want to do is to give a little and learn a little. And so, while we ask some of the questions that we already have for the panel, we also want to give you all the opportunity to ask questions for the, from the panel and also to give you, you know, you guys heard of elevator speech before, right? When you get a chance to respond, try to use the elevator speech because if everybody decides they want to give a mini sermon, you know, eight o'clock will become nine o'clock, nine o'clock will become ten o'clock. Okay? So, everybody say elevator speech.
Elevator speech.
All right. So, we're going to start with the panel. Go ahead and give your elevator speech. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Victoria Thomas and I am originally from Albany, Georgia. I am a Ph.D. student at the University of Washington, working for the Center for Communication and Difference Equity.
Again, my name is Stephen Michael Thomas. I represent the King County Prosecutor's Office, which means that I represent all of you. I am a, when I stand up in court, I say, my name is Stephen Thomas and I represent the state of Washington. I deal primarily with domestic violence cases. So, day in and day out, I'm on the phone talking with domestic violence victims or talking about issues of domestic violence in court. I'm originally from the South Side of Chicago, born by and raised on the South Side of Chicago. My father's black from the South, from Georgia, from Augusta, Georgia. My mother's German, so I grew up in a biracial household. My dad left my family when I was eight years old, left me on the South Side of Chicago with my mom, raised me, a white woman raised me in an all-black neighborhood and kept it real. Took me to a black church, taught me what it meant to be a black man, taught me about the responsibility of being a black man. And I learned that mostly from the people in my church. Came out here about seven years ago. My wife and I came out here to go to law school at Seattle University. My wife is also a lawyer as well. We have a six-month-old son named Xavier.
My name is Davida Briscoe. I'm a mother of five. Again, in October two thousand and seven, wait, two thousand and ten, I experienced one of the worst tragedies of my life. My, not only did my twin brother go on trial for a very violent crime, but he was sentenced to forty-eight years in prison. In that same week that I lost my twin brother, who was a perpetrator of violence against a woman and a child, was found guilty in that case. In that same week, my son was shot during the gang brawl in Tacoma, Washington. Before I lost my son, I had worked with youth and this has been my passion in this community in King County before moving to Tacoma. When I moved out to Tacoma, it, you know, that's just when I experienced the loss of my brother, losing him to the prison system and then also losing my son. But I had grown, I grew up in a household where violence was normal. And so, parenting in a violent world, again, is just a conversation that I have much personal interest in and also have a professional interest. So, I usually tell people, I didn't choose this work, this work chose me. And so, you know, I didn't ask for this calling. It just dropped on my lap when death knocked on my door. And I see my twin brother going to prison, but I grew up with my mother being spending fifteen years in prison, my father going to prison, my parents being bona fide hustlers. So, my whole life was surrounded by drugs, crime and violence, my entire life. So, you know, and then growing up and then having a tragedy in my own life, you know, thinking I was the Christian parent and, you know, I did all the right things, you know? Was I a bad parent because my son ended up, you know, being shot in a gang brawl? You know, was my brother a bad, was he a bad kid? You know, so those questions came up for me and where I had to really dig deeper to say, okay, what is really going on in our community? What is really going on in our homes? And can I be able to answer some of these questions of where I can try to prevent this from happening to other families?
And just keep the mic up there. And so, what you all, what you heard so far from the panelists, does anyone have a striking question that they want to ask first? We have a hand in the back?
I don't necessarily, like, can you hear me fine?
Did you guys hear this?
I don't think it's necessarily a question, it's just a statement to what we have been doing in the state, which is family violence. And that keeps being addressed because children grow up in that environment and I'm a part of that as well. It does perpetuate in the lives of the people who have options or we know right from long so we briefly just perpetuate psycho, which is that feels indirect, terrible to what's happening in our community.
Yeah. And that's also one of our pre-screen questions to discuss the psychological impact of those childhood experiences of parenting as an adult.
Well, I can, I can talk about a recent case that I had, a domestic violence case where a young man, well, not a young man, he's about forty-seven years old, beat up his girlfriend. They've been dating for about twelve years. He's beat her up on several different occasions. And on this particular occasion, he was at home, they were at their house, it was the guy, the girl, it was her mom and her two kids. And they got into an argument. He knocked her into the face, she fell against the wall. I mean, I have pictures of blood all on the wall. She slammed down to the ground and she's knocked unconscious. The two kids are watching this whole thing. She gets taken out of the stretcher, she gets taken to the hospital, she's got stitches all in her mouth, through her mouth and also in her head as well. So, fast forward, I'm talking with the woman after this all goes down and she's telling me about the effect that this had on her children. And she says, she has a, can't mention her names, but she has an older boy. And she told me that this, this older boy was having nightmares, that he was not doing as well in school. But what really struck me the most was that she said that not too long after this, that he ended up slapping another girl at school. And she told me that he now thinks that it was cool to hit on women. So, just talking about that perpetuation of that violence, he didn't, I mean, he's a, I believe he's an eight-year-old kid. I mean, he, he's modeling what he saw. So, that's a little bit of how I've seen that cycle play out, just in the work that I do.
Speaking to what he was saying, we kind of think through those effects and we think of a child watching a violence. You know, there's always different reactions in different children. I'm noticing girls, it creates this sense of power, you know, powerlessness, you know, I can't help my mom. And in those moments, it kind of learns that as a woman, their power is not coming through a physical way. So, they look for different ways to find their power. And a lot of times, that comes out in sexual behavior because women are realizing that our power is not coming in these physical forms. So, it does play a huge role in a lot of the relationships that they create, especially with men as they move forward.
So, when you say what they see, so what do you think about the impact that television, music, media has when it comes to children and violence?
Well, as a scholar at the University of Washington, I'm in the Communication Department and I do a lot of research on the media effects of violence, as well as in multiple different communities. And I think when it comes to violence in the media, the real issue is not that they're viewing it, it's that we don't know quite how to have conversations with them about what they're seeing. We're just not quite sure, like, you know, how do we approach these conversations and how do you have these conversations? And that's kind of what the Center for Communication, Difference and Equity is working with. We're trying to kind of figure out how do we give parents these tools to kind of have these conversations about these media things that are happening, that they're seeing every day. And I think that's kind of why they become desensitized to it. They don't quite know how to work it out in their mind, like, what does this really mean, especially if I'm eight? Like, what does it mean for me at eight? What is this going to mean for me at sixteen? So, without having their parents or community members work through those conversations with them, they're kind of doing it with each other and their information is becoming just mixed up with all of these images and what they're seeing.
I think there is a, there's a great, there's a lack of... We had encyclopedias. Y'all remember those? That's as close as I got to Seattle, Washington, in South Carolina, those encyclopedias. Today, my daughters are ninety-seven. They could be in Washington State in their home. When I think about the access that our kids have now to all sorts of things, there are songs that my kids sing that we don't play in the house. And I truly wonder, you were at school all day. How do you know the song? My point is, it's all around. And so, one of the things that I'm learning as a parent is that there's some responsibility. Maybe my wife and I agree that whenever they bring it up, it's time to stop. And I believe that the access that our kids have, that young or old, is not seen before. And so, I think there is a lower responsibility that we can take as parents. But I struggle still today with how do you manage the access to some of the things that our kids are exposed to? My daughter, who's nine, she came in the house one time, she's probably five, and mentioned the word penis to me. And as a father, I wanted to get it. I didn't know who he was that mentioned it. But there are things that in our communities, in our schools, that are being discussed all the time. So, for me, I do think there's, I'm in the department, I think there's some influence, but I don't bring it all on hip-hop culture.
Davida, you had something to say on that?
Um, I, again, I know a lot more now than when I was raising my son alone, with no father. His father was sentenced to life in prison. But it's the negative messaging and, like you said, the not being able to filter what they're watching. And when you're parenting alone, you're just letting them watch the movie and, of course, you want to get them whatever device that they want. They want a tablet, they want a laptop, they want, you know? And I'm getting those things, but I'm not filtering, or he has a strong male presence in his life to help him filter those messages. So, you know, when he's out on the street, and we know scientifically that media increases violent, aggressive behaviors. And, you know, I know straight out of context just came out, you know, which, you know, everybody said, you know, I hate him, you know, because N W B gave us drybar music, you know? And, yeah, it did. You know, and we know that, you know, violent music lyrics, you know, increase violent thoughts and aggressive, hostile, aggression in young people. So, we know that, that's scientific based. So, when my son is listening to all these, the music lyrics that he's listening to, I'm just buying him the CDs, I'm buying him auto, Grand Theft Auto, I'm buying him whatever because I don't mind him playing it. But at the same time, I'm thinking that if, you know, if I just tell him, you know, Donald, you know, don't fight, you know, don't, don't do this, you know? I'm not training him how to have empathy for other people, I'm not training him how, you know, when they say a woman is a beating hole, I'm not telling him, you know, I'm not helping him to filter a lot of the messages that he's, that he's receiving. And so, for me, you know, when, especially the messages that black men are America's demons, you know, they get those messages on the basketball court, they get those messages when they go to the schoolyard, they get those messages when they're out on the street and they're interacting with one another. And then when they're interacting with the police, those messages are being reinforced. So, they begin to adopt a criminal code of respect where my name is all I got. So, I got to be willing to die for it and even kill for it. And so, it's not so, it's the aggressive behavior that's learned or acquired through what they're listening to, but it's also how they begin to view themselves. So, that's, that's the issue for me about what, how they can socialize and condition the media.
And so, how do you, how do and when do you start having those conversations? Because you see a lot of the younger parents now, and it's like, you know, they're not having the conversation because the conversation has never been had with them. And so, the time they do have that conversation is like you said, when your daughter comes home and starts talking about his, where's my daughter? Oh, they're in here. So, when do, how do we talk to parents about when to have those conversations? I mean, how many of you in here have kids that started at an early age and was having those conversations about, you know, gang violence, sex and all those other things? And see, and you're the norm of the folks that are, a lot of the folks that we work with, because they're not having those conversations. I got two hands, I'm going to get Paul in if you guys want to say something.
Really, um, we have to pick up our son before our practice is over, we may just quit. I like what you said, you have to, you have to stay in the dialogue. And when kids get of age, particularly, and it's kind of also culturally too, right? We distance ourselves from them, we're trying to give them some space to find their own identity. I think it's, that's, this, there's two strategies that we use, right? We're former youth pastors and, you know, we, we love young people. We have literally inundated ourselves our whole lives, young peoples, with just young people in general, have a deep love and passion to work with young people. But we, we, we decided to go with two strategies. First, to stay in the dialogue, no matter, and, and to, to be less of someone who answers questions all the time and more of a question-asker. There's an old quote that says, what's more beautiful than the answer is the question that preceded it. We have to allow for them to process these things themselves and stay in the dialogue, no matter what it is. N W A, yeah, we went to see it and we brought our kids with us too, right? And part of us, you know, the nostalgic moment of the nineties, particularly here in Seattle, or the eighties, that, that was, like, that changed and, and completely changed the youth landscape. We were no longer b-boys, we was gangsters then, you know? And it was, you know, eventually grew in the South End city, et cetera. But I think it's important that we, you know, we stay in the dialogue with them. We were able to, to talk to them afterwards and process with them what they were seeing. And, you know, as a parent, it's like, do you give it to them, do you not? You know, we all grew up with nothing, right? And so, we want to give our kids something, you know? And so, and then these are, this is, this is, it's great, but it's, it's a devil, see your wife said? We did turn to, it's a devil. But, but to that point, if you don't have the dialogue, this is already having it for you. It doesn't matter if you, if you've decided or not, there's so many portals into other things with this device. And, and, and so, I think it's important. So, the second strategy is we start planting, planting our God kids and, and the kids who went to youth ministry and that they're adults now, we start to plant those good people in their lives. Because we know they're not always going to come to us. And so, this, the, the, you know, so far, so good, you know? We worry about our son, like, both of our, we have two kids now that, that go to Ranger Beach High School. I'm at the football field with my son and I hear, everyone looks up and they go back to business as usual. And I'm thinking to myself, is anyone moved by this anymore? And so, but one of the reasons why I'm here is I think, I think it would be helpful for you all and for parents that are dealing with it to be able to, like, what is your strategy? What have you used up until now? Because I think a light bulb will go off for some of us with some of the strategies that other parents are using, and I think the answer might be here amongst us. Thank you.
Paul, what do you think? Urban Family.
Urban Family, brother, Urban Family.
Uh, so I just have a couple of questions here. We have a lot of systems here, there's a lot of systems represented, and, I don't know if the same is right, but we have kind of successfully infiltrated the system. And I know when we get together, we can talk about the system a lot, but I'm wondering, whereas people who are a part of the system, where have we, we failed in our community? Where are we falling short? What can we do better? Because we're in there, and then just recognize, this is a very powerful room, maybe a lot of the people we serve are not here, and this is a great parenting class for all of us, but how do we give it to the people, you know what I mean? How do we want to respond to that?
Well, I'll, I'll talk about it, because I, you know, I work in the criminal justice system, which is probably one of the most racist systems that we can have, that we have in America. And I am a representative of that system. And I think the way that I feel, that's what you want to talk about, not the good things that I can do with some of the failures, is that correct?
Yeah. Where in the community are we falling short and what can we do?
Yeah, I, I think that, I mean, as a community, where are we falling short? You know, I would say that as a representative, speaking for the people that are in my office, I think that we don't come to do what I'm doing right now, we kind of listen to what people are talking about, listen to what people are feeling. I was actually talking with my friend Zach over here one time about a, a police shooting that happened somewhere, I don't remember where it was, one of the multiple incidents where someone got shot. And as a lawyer, I start going in to analyze the situation, well, did he pull a gun, or did he do this or do that? Because that's how I think as a lawyer. And he was talking to me about how it felt to him, about the traumatic effect it had on him, and I couldn't really hear that because I'm so caught up in the, the, you know, the legal stances of it. And so, I think having that feeling, having that empathy, having that compassion is something that I can speak only for the people that I, that I work with day in and day out, who for the most part are white people, they don't feel that pain, they don't understand that, they can't, they can't, they can't fathom, you know, how it could be that, you know, someone could be as lovely as this woman right here and, and have such traumatic things in their family, they've never met anyone like this before, you know? So, I think that's a huge thing, it's just being able to have an open ear and to be able to listen. Because as a lawyer, we love to talk, we love to tell people what they should do, but instead of really listening and figuring out what it is that we should be doing, and so I can only say that that's how we fail. One of the ways that we fail, I mean, we can, it's a lot of different failures, but one of the things is just showing up and just listening and, and trying to implement some of the things that the community is asking for and needing and wanting and implement those into some actions.
I'll add to that, I think your point around the listening is important, because I do believe that even in this context, we represent government, we represent nonprofit. A lot of what we have generated in terms of services is based on folks who've gone to get training. And what is missed is the element of listening to the community. I'll give you one example. Where I live in Wilmington, in Newark, Delaware, Wilmington is probably the most urban city in the whole state. The father absence rate, children being raised without fathers in the home, this is data. For black kids, about eighty-five percent. Did y'all hear what I said? Eighty-five percent. So, one of the main schools where these kids are going, we've had all the banks, credit card companies are in the same community. And there's a line that's invisible, where these people who go to work over here never get touched by violence. Over here, he just described, you hear this in the morning, seven fifteen in the morning, we had a bank that was going to give the school fifty thousand dollars to help the kids, and what they wanted to earmark it for was iPads. Which is very noble and very nice, but you know good and well, that iPad goes home, guess what? It ain't coming back. So, what we decided to do, they asked me to come in and help them distribute iPads. I said, before we do this, I want to thank you, hold your check, let's ask these kids what they need. This surprised everybody. We did focus groups with the kids and the parents and the teachers. They said, sir, we want your check, but what would benefit us more, number one on the list was grief counseling. Are you hearing me? Because the kids, there are two things that the kids are asked to do, and these are, these are from the miles of the past, they're asked to get rest and get a good meal before you go to school. These kids ain't getting neither. That's probably not good English. The second thing that they ask for, because they have uniforms, because the kids are going home and the parents aren't there, they're coming home, they play outside like me and my brothers did, you put that on and go to school the next day. Well, at a certain age, we start smelling. So, the hallways smell like locker rooms. The second thing to get them to learn was going to be the opportunity to have clean gardens. So, the parents asked for, which they don't have, laundry services. The third thing was, the kids, I have kids, I went to college, my fifth grader bringing my homework, I ain't never seen it. And I went to school, so their parents were saying they were very much confused when this homework comes home. So, the third thing, I hear amen, the third thing that they asked for was a homework hotline. And so, the guy who was going to write a check for fifty grand, heard this overwhelming evidence from the community, change it and we'll check for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The important point here is, where we're falling short is, we're proposing solutions without asking people who go to serve. And so, the government, our nonprofits, our churches, even in this beautiful facility, we can do a better job of, to answer your question, engage in that population. What I found out in this, one example, is that the people who knew best what they needed were the people. And the last thing I'll mention, because I can talk about this all day, count, count on systems gets us where we are today. Ain't nobody coming to say us. So, if you pissed off and fed up about what ain't happening, my father would say, do it yourself, he would add another word in there, do it yourself. So, for us, y'all figured the word out, for us, if there is something that is burning in your inside around solving a community problem, if the doors you're knocking on are not answering, find yourself a circle to actually address that yourself. But it has to be based on the force of the folks you're intending to serve. I apologize for all that. I got one here, I got two in the back.
Thank you. I, I have two, honestly, one, that too. Oh? Sorry. Now, for that too, some of the things you said, I, my nineteen-year-old daughter, which I stated earlier, was, is my goddaughter, that I passed fifty-four months old. And I didn't have a legal recourse or anything, my mom just gave it to me. But anyways, she is, it's so funny because she'll come and say to me, uh, Mom, I need to talk to you about something. And I always have to take a deep breath, embrace myself, because, you know, and I was listening to you talk about how when they get older, you want to kind of, you know, let them find their own way, but she'll, Mom, I think I need to start working. Oh, okay, you know, it's like, so she comes and tells me everything, too much stuff, and sometimes I just don't know how to process at the moment, because it's like, Mom, you know that neighbor was talking to me? Well, I had tried smoking weed and I couldn't, I, so, you know, what do you, you know, it's like, what am I saying? When you, you're coming to me, it's like I didn't find out who it was or, but, so, I, I appreciate that communication with her, but, yeah, it, these kids are very different this, this time. My heart, I just want to, I just have to acknowledge you and apply you in my heart because I'm listening to your story and looking at how beautiful you are, sitting there and wanting and willing to help. I, I think about, a little bit about myself in a different sense, because when I was sixteen years old and my first boyfriend, love so true, I got, got into an argument with another young man, was shot, you know, and I'm fifty years old now and that still lives with me every single day, in some capacity, in some capacity of the way I get in my heart and the way I raise my kids, it still lives. And so, the grief, you know, I, you know, that was a boy, that was a boyfriend, you know, not really even, but even a friend or a boyfriend, no. But you know what I'm saying, is that has lived with me throughout my life. And I don't think these kids understand the impact that the violence have throughout for people that are just seeing the surroundings. So, the grief is great.
Do you have anything to respond to the panel, or like, in the back?
Um, yeah, I mentioned the grief counseling, and she had this with the system, so I don't know how to answer all those things. But, um, I wanted to say that one of the people that I had founded, the McCain Project, I actually founded this organization a year after I lost my son. And I, just as an experiment, I, everybody can raise a hand if they've heard of Tray Martin Martin, Michael Brown, okay, haven't heard of Devon Ray Davis, sixteen years old, there is Camille Love, twenty years old, there is, I can go on and on, and I have pictures where I've collected these young people. Devon Ray Davis was sixteen years old, they found him shot in the head in a dumpster in Tacoma. It was not featured on, on the news, it was not in the paper, and I was shocked. I mean, I couldn't believe, you mean to tell me that somebody found a child in a dumpster? And our community is not outraged? I mean, I, there's no marches, there's nobody's hollering, there's no action? I mean, I couldn't believe it. I mean, I, I just, I was in shock. Then after that, I heard of Hector Hernandez, another fifteen-year-old who was stabbed thirty-four times by two other teenagers. This is when I started to say, you know, okay, am I going to sit around and wait for the system? You know, or am I going to, as a parent, get out there and try to figure out? Number one, I had to start unlearning some of the stuff that I had learned. So, the first year or two, I had went to training after training after training on violence prevention and, what are the things that I have to stop doing? And what are some of the negative behaviors that I picked up or the germs that I'm spreading around to my children? Everybody was, what are some of the negative behaviors that I have, the wrong beliefs, the wrong attitudes that I have? So, first it started with me, and what, what were some of the things that I was passing on to my own children and in my own household? Am I creating a hostile situation in my own home? And am I doing that in my community? I go home and I respect my employer, and I go home and talk bad to my own husband. So, it was that type of stuff that I had to start doing within myself. So, I didn't have time to wait for the system to change, and I know that there are people out there that's willing to keep working in the system, but while they're doing that, now I got to get on, on the ground. And I have to start, because I got kids every day that's been shot at, every day, I got kids that's scared to go home, they don't want to go outside, or, you know, they think they can't go on this block, or they can't go on that block, you know, like, well, I got to just go and look for a job, but I can't go, I can't go to that job, Mom, you know, I can't, I can't go on that block, can you give me a ride? So, I think the first thing was that these kids had to know that there was somebody that was willing to die for them, like the civil rights movement, you know, is there somebody who's willing to be on the front line and say, I'm willing to put my life on the line to save you? Because that's what they was willing to do in the civil rights movement. They don't have that today. And today, they don't feel valued. You know, that's why they're wearing obituaries around their necks. I went down to Oakland, I couldn't believe it, it was a mom that lost two kids, two sons, and all the kids wear obituaries around their necks. Or on their shirt, and in my generation, we didn't have nobody wearing, or I didn't know any of my friends that, um, or at, in grade school, I didn't have anybody that was wearing their friends' picture on their shirt, rest in peace, you know, but are we teaching them how to live? I mean, how can we, you know, how, you know, if everything is rest in peace, rest in peace, you know, they don't know how to live. So, um, so, yeah, I started the McCain Project number one, so that all of the young people that have died from violence, we tend to call it, actually, violence homicide is the second leading cause of death for young people between the ages of ten to twenty-four. It's the leading cause of death for black boys from fifteen to twenty-four. It's the leading cause of death, homicide. So, I don't have time to wait for the system, I'm getting out there, I'm trying, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm, and I show boys in the hood, I'm showing them South Central, I'm showing them all the movies so that I can show them where they picked up those negative behaviors and those attitudes. And that way, I just call them risk factors, and that way, I ain't calling them bad or stupid. I'm just saying, this is the thing that's going to put your life at risk, just like diabetes, if you keep on putting sugar in your diet and you don't want, you don't want exercise, you know, that's what the doctor tell them, right? So, that's what I tell them, you want to, you want to hang around your pockets like that, you got guns? They can actually pick up that gun and actually shoot you if they having a bad day. It can happen. So, um, so, so those are the things that I've got, that I just went out there and just, and really, I'm just a mom, you know, I'm not, I, I don't even call myself an expert, but I'm just a mom, and then I'm also a sister, you know, and not only can I have one brother that's doing forty-eight years, but I got another brother that did twenty-two years. So, I mean, this is, this is my life, so I have to, yeah, again, I'm trying to work with my system, I just, I just get out there and I just go.
Um, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of the panel for doing this, and I also just want to recognize Davida, thank you for your work. I grew up in Tacoma and went to school there in the seventies and eighties, and graduated in the nineties when I left, and saw a lot of representation, you know, which is talking about. So, now I live here in Ranger Beach, and what I wanted, um, don't want to talk too long, but, um, want to mention about the issue of just decubanization of our lives, and it's what Steph and you were talking about from the prosecutor's office. Something that's really struck me and just part of what I've been thinking through and I think we're welcome dialogue, you know, you're talking about how the prosecutors you work with, right, just have no idea, right, what actually happens. And, you know, it really had me thinking, what I tell my students in C L University, is, you know, it doesn't matter that I have these degrees, that I teach, that I do all this publishing, you know, that I'm a commissioner for our civil service commission, I see the city attorney, I know the police chief, you know, all that, or my husband's out there, or my kids are out there, right, they don't know, it's another black person, right? And what really just hit me and got me started on the boat project I'm doing, and then I'll stop, is, you know, every time we hear something, it seems like in the news of somebody, somebody's child being killed... of somebody, somebody's child being killed, I just got tired of hearing that they're, but they were a good boy. They were a good girl, right? Every time, they were, it's like, the response, you know, needed to be like defend your child, you know? Goodness, they're humans, right? The fact that, you know, they're human even if they weren't a gang. But a lot of them aren't, right? And the fact that it matters that, you know, you don't hear white parents saying that very often. It's like, oh, it's such a loss, we're so heartbroken. It's not, they were a good, you know, they were on honor roll, they did this back. So first of all, just this thing I've been noticing in responses, but something else that really hit me. I went to Washington DC for the Million Ball March, Mother's Day weekend. That was my request for Mother's Day. Emory Hamilton, out of Milwaukee, who lost her son, Daunte Hamilton, and has been organizing women like here around the country. You know, while we were there, part of what they were talking about was not just police vigilante violence, but it was also this lack of investigating and taking seriously the loss of lives of color in particular. And, you know, I'd done a lot of research, but I'd heard for the first time that a lot of priests use amongst themselves an NHI designation. Some of you may have heard of this, a no humans involved type of slang that they use to talk about people that don't mean, you know, that's like basically prostitute or whore in their characterization or, depending on the neighborhood, people cuddle or suspect a gang related. And, I mean, physically maybe ill to hear that, you know, they would use that type of terminology. Even our police chief, former police chief, Norman Stanford, talks about that in the book. There's NHI designation, well, you know, then it's like when we triage what you have to respond to, this isn't important, right? So then you hear about people staying in dumpsters, you know, people like Michael Brown and others, you know, just laying on the street for a long time, right? But this humanization, and the thing is, dehumanization. You know, these stories are in the news every day, but still, we're so desensitized. And so one of the things I've just been thinking about is, you know, can we change that or is that even how we, you know, go about that? I know one thing I've just personally decided isn't my work. When someone says something like, "Well, you know, you could move to Bellevue." I'm like, "Well, that is not the same to my family in Bellevue, right, as your family." So, and because it's not set up like that, right? Racism is not set up for us to win, right? So I just say that to talk about like ideas of how, you know, if that's, you know, not that that's the only way to go, but really that lack of empathy, there's even any connection that, you know, we put our child in lessons too, they do little league. Like we invest in our kids, right? You know, our families, we're even too.
Anyone want to respond to that? Also, it does seem like we have a problem with folks holding the mic. But just in case, if anybody has a question, if they want to put on the card, go ahead and put your question on the card and I'll grab that question.
One thing that I, I think it kind of speaks to, I think behind me is something you said about kind of where we go in the community and then also something that you said about grief counseling. I had a lot of young men come to my home. And one thing that I've talked to them about is just being heartbroken. And I think we don't really touch on that, our boys who do not have their fathers in the home. It doesn't matter before they play video games, start watching TV, talking to girls, their hearts broken as soon as they become confident of the fact that they do not have their father in the home. And I think that's something that we don't touch on. We talk about the single moms and we're doing it to make it happen, but we don't talk about our children specifically, our young black boys who don't have a father. I think that helps them to feel less than human. And I think that's the breeding ground for a lot of these children where the violence and all the media and the stuff can come in because their hearts are broken. So that's one thing that I would, you know, hope that we almost have to, like my daughter, he does the best he can. He takes a long one, does it when he can. But if that's something we can have a discussion around in other systems, because there's a lot of young black men that are fostering these boys. They feel little and they're living the time, and they're going to the games and they're helping them. But can we get that in schools? Is there something we can do where you work and where you work so that it becomes? Because all of our boys are going to the system, whether they got parents or not. If they're going to the system, we're all touching them at some point, either on the good side or the bad side. So if there's something we can do to have that conversation and put those things in motion. I don't know of anything, there might be something out here, but if there's something that we can kind of think about too, because I think that's a lot where it starts. Doesn't matter what we do, they don't have dad and they don't feel, they feel less than. And it's easier to perpetuate against each other's and themselves and self-hate. All those things those grown folks know makes it difficult for us to be black and American. Our boys are just trying to navigate and it's not working.
And so Victoria or Stephen, I'm not sure if that's something that you can touch on because I know you guys are doing a lot of work around domestic violence with young girls. And so maybe that's something that you can talk about is how is that impacting PC young men who are growing up without their fathers or in these relationships? I just think that you're trying to be, being good fathers, but when you only know what you know, you know, that's what you know, and that's all you know.
Um, it kind of goes back, we talk about how do you teach empathy and how do you teach feelings? We think about the masculine masculinity and how our boys were raised to be tough, especially when we think about black masculinity and how that is different. We think about white masculinity, like black masculinity is more sexual. They're seen as beasts, they're seen as these things, right? So knowing where they have this mentality that they're also seen as people with feelings and being able to discuss them. There's even studies that say that when little boys fall down, we don't coddle them as much. We pick them up, we're like, "You're a man, get up, you'll be fine." But if a little girl falls down, we're like, "Okay, honey, come here, talk about it, tell me how you feel," right? So I definitely think that if we can find some way to have conversations in ways that our boys feel comfortable expressing their feelings, then they can get them out. Because I think a lot of the violence is just unexpressed emotions that are trapped and they cannot get it out in any other way and then they end up snapping. And then we kind of end up in these positions that we're constantly in there.
You know, I don't, I don't have an answer, but I do have a problem that I'm wrestling with and I'm hoping that maybe the community, maybe, it's part of, it's a very complex question. And the question is that maybe about, I was on leave this summer because I'm taking care of my son. But before I went on leave, I had about sixteen or seventeen cases that were assigned to me for trial. And I just, just one day did an evaluation of those cases to look at the demographics of them. And I found that out of those sixteen cases, nine of the people that were assigned to me for trial were African-Americans. Two of them were Latino, I believe, what are two of them were of Middle Eastern descent and then the rest were white. And we clearly know that there's not nine out of sixteen people in the city of Seattle who are not African-Americans. So there's obviously a real disproportionality amongst those people. And it made me wonder, why would there such a large number of black men who have been charged with domestic violence cases? And it's different, for example, than a drug case. We know that drug cases, you know, police enforce, you know, they go in a certain neighborhoods, they choose to be there, they choose to come to the South End, they choose to go to the city, they choose to go downtown, and they enforce the laws in particular areas where they may not force them, as Harden Bellevue or Perkland or so on and so forth. But in domestic violence, you got a woman that's calling 911 saying, "Help me, this man's slapping me upside my head" or whatever it might be. It's a different kind of case. Not to say that there's not a lot of racism that happens, and that there is, but there's also something that's happened within the community where I'm seeing a large number of African-Americans who have committed domestic violence cases. And I don't know the answer to that question, why is that? I don't know. It's something that I have, I've brought to the attention of the elected official and you can go ask him too. His name, Dan Satterberg, you can email him at daniel.satterberg@keencounty.gov and ask that question. Why is that going on? Why, what's going on? Why is this happening? And I'm curious to find out why.
Okay, so this is not new. This is not, I've done battle wounds treatment with men. And majority of my clients were black. Okay? And many of them had been through the treatment several times. So that's telling you how well this worked. You understand what I'm saying? So I think that we need to look at some things, issues such as poverty. Poverty is a driver of violence. I don't care what your wife says. I think we need to look at the fact that when, you know, we're talking about grief and loss, we don't get counseling for that. Unless you've been certified crazy and you got to go get some counseling, then you might be mandated to do so. But we don't, we don't get grief and loss counseling or traumatic things happen. And we are a wounded people in this country. And we need to acknowledge that. And we do not. We don't acknowledge the fact that we have no history that we can go to school, hook to school and learn about. So we have an identity crisis, self-hatred crisis, and we are missing some major elements in terms of culture and we are as a people. The other piece I wanted to speak from, I'm sure other people speak to the crisis that you're talking about, but it's been that way. When they go to jail, when they call the hotlines looking for help, there's no home or justice, ain't no management treatment unless agencies, grassroots agencies, the Black Prisoners Caucus and other organizations, they go and they minister in the prisons, right? And that's some of the only way they get some out, some semblance of help. But there's no, there's no rehabilitation really happening in our prison system. So they just keep perpetuating the same cycle. And a lot of it is to me as well, poverty apparently. Because see, somebody got to eat, somebody got to, you got a job, you won't get a job doing this, right? Because this is not gonna stop you. And they're just gonna keep cycling our young boys through the system. If we as a community don't stop. So I know you said earlier, brother, we got people from all different parts of the country, but we got grassroots here, just like this, Pierce grassroots, this Shabla go Pierce grassroots, I'm grassroots too. But I just have to figure out a way to infiltrate the system so I can get to my people. You see, because they hold them hostage because they, and I'm gonna go back to one more thing. And I'm gonna let this mic go. The young lady here was talking about young men, their fathers, no, they all have their dads and their moms. I work with young girls and we have this conversation regularly. We're devastated by the fact they daddy and they don't know what a good man looks like. And makes all the wrong love choices, right? Have issues, am I gay, am I bi, am I, all kind of issues surface from that. So our males, they have a mom and daddy to create them, they need a mom and daddy to teach them. Hey, no one can teach a man how to be a man. She can show him how to be a good person. She can show him morals and values and virtues. But a man has to be able to teach a young man how to be a man. And so our young women need to see what a good man looks like. And when their daddy in prison in the home, and the young one has to work without a father in their pack sort of like in such a way, just like it does our young, young boys. So it's a two, you know, they both suffer.
That's good, a lot of good information. And we got a lot of heads in a little time. So when we talked earlier about the elevator speech, we broke the elevator. We deserve that. So we're gonna give everybody the elevator speech, okay?
Now, I just wanted to hear my heart. I've been here twenty-two years. Came from a street boy. And I moved here because the community was on fire, it was crazy. I'm living in an all-black community. Today, everywhere I go, I live, I lived in February, I wasn't born in February. But everywhere I go, I'm like trying to meet people. You know, I see you at the Walmart, I go to Walmart, it's a minute, it'll take me an hour because I'm talking. "Hey, how you doing? What's your name? Where you from? What'd you say?" Because that's what I got from the South. One of the things I rouse up with here is, you look out a house and a building, garage. You open the garage, you go in, you shut. I knew all my neighbors. If I go to a football game, I know every kid, I know his mom, I know his dad. And I think we really got to be back to the community. It's two types of knowing you. People can know me, K-N-O-W, but also even know me in a whole. We gotta really start knowing each other and saying, not start saying, "Know," to work together because we really got on the sidelines. I mean, this meeting is good, but what are we gonna do after this? Are we gonna continue to meet and talk about our community? Because if not, it's gonna continue out until we do something together. And I'm just sharing my heart because I'm looking for the black community so we can work together.
I'm one of those French workers that's been in the community, working with women on domestic violence for years because I was a victim defendant. And after I became a victim defendant, my case was released without prejudice because I did all the work and learned how to be a legal advocate and learned how to advocate for myself. And that was back in nineteen ninety-six. Okay, just to let you know, brother, this has been a really long, long time. When I went to jail, I didn't even know what DV was, I thought it was just fighting, okay? And we still have African-Americans who are not educated about domestic violence, perpetuation, treatment, anger and management, the cycle of violence. They don't even, they don't have a clue of what DV is. And now I go into the jails at C-TAC Federal Detention Center, I'm working with women on a regular basis. And Asians, Ukrainians, every nationality you could, you know. And the first thing that I'm working on is valuing themselves. Identity crises, brainwashing. That's what I spent twelve weeks on before I could even get to DV. Grief, loss, system issues. And so this is, you know, this is huge. And these are women who are gonna get out of jail and go back to their, these are gonna go back to their homes. So what I just want to tell you is, the work does start with our community coming together and working with our kids and doing academic coaching work and working with black boys who are in the third grade. My first kid that I worked with said, "I don't need my daddy to go to Boeing and work as an engineer and bodying all these gangs. I need him to hear me like you do for a month." Our kids are not being heard by their parents. And we need to listen to our kids as black people.
Kind of just on that note, I wanted to read something that my son wrote four months before he died. Which kind of goes in mind of exactly what you were saying and how our young people are viewed by adults, which we call adultism. Where our young people are stereotyped, where they're labeled and where they're pretty much put down. The experience that I had was I went to a grocery store, mini mart, elderly lady, there were some young black boys that were standing outside. She goes in and tells him, "You need to tell them to move. Why are they standing out there?" They weren't selling drugs, they weren't doing nothing, they were just standing there. And she didn't like the fact their presence bothered her. Bothered her. And they weren't doing anything wrong. But I want to read this and hopefully this will resonate with all of us because he wrote this just four months before he died. He said, "If I was to drop dead today, people would say a lot of things. It matters who it comes from. Like people that never really got to know me, my teachers, police officers and authorities see me as a bad guy. They would think things like, they would think things such as Donald's dead, oh, I predicted that. They see me as a gang member, a troubled young individual. The people that actually know me and have been around me for a while will miss me. They would say things like, 'He cared about us more than himself. He did things for us. He was smart but young. He was somebody I would like to be like. He wasn't there yet, but he was getting there. If only God gave him a little more time. I can say one thing about him, that boy, he has died. Rest in paradise, Donald McCandie," is what they would say.
You know, I wanted to just kind of like digress and go back to a statement that was made about how that they need, they, this community wants to be heard. Got a room full of passionate people here. There's passion on that stage. And there's passion in that community that got them to go from one, go from fifty to a hundred and twenty-five. But even though you may have that small nucleus of people that are passionate about we want to be heard, when we speak, are you gonna listen? And that's really...
And that's really the question to our communities, because we're working in the community grassroots. And we're in our communities and we're watching the cotton in the ears. And we're watching, you know, a statement was made about how that, you know, um, when, when you started looking at people and you started sharing things with them, do you really want me in your business? Because if I'm gonna share something with you, I'm gonna share something with you that's gonna make you make a dis, that you're gonna have to make a decision and some choices on. And so my, my, my statement is more of, are we willing to listen?
We don't, a lot of talk about growing up without a father and violence, and we don't really do a lot of talk about trauma, as you mentioned earlier, we don't seek counseling.
No.
Um, so when you talk about firsthand, secondhand trauma, uh, it's witnessed by, being a part of violence or witnessed by violence, and then that being something that impacts our community as it relates to our young men and our young women. What are you seeing in the courts and how they're dealing with that during sentencing or when they're, uh, giving these plea deals for the young people that are coming into the courts?
To be honest with you, it's really done on a very, very minimal basis. And if it is, it's done on a case-by-case basis. Like I say, in, in, in my cases, I invite that type of dialogue with, uh, with the person who's gonna accuse them of crime. I mean, I wanna know where you come from, uh, I wanna know what your history is, it helps to explain some of the, the reason why you've done what you've done. It doesn't mean that I'm not gonna hold you accountable, because there is another victim on the other side of the table as well, and her needs need to be voiced. And the community as a whole needs to stand up and say that what you did was wrong. But it does come into play in maybe how long you may go to jail for, what kind of services are offered to you, so on and so forth. Uh, but I would say that that's not something that is built within the system, uh, to really look at the, the whole of a person. Uh, we're, like, what she was just sharing about her son, uh, I would say is accurate. And I don't know her, I don't know her son, but I think what she talked about, what her son was saying, that, you know, how people would view him, you know, I think that's accurate. But because I'm from the South Side of Chicago and a lot of my friends who I grew up with are in jail, I understand that there is a lot more to a person than just this moment in time where they did something wrong. But that's something that's, that's not really viewed, uh, as a whole in the system. We're looking at this behavior on this day, you shot at these people, you're gonna get locked up for as long as we can, and that's all that we know about you, really, is that event. And so again, it comes back to, 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 I think, people in the community voicing their opinions and having people within the system who are willing to listen and be heard. It really make this system, I don't know if you, uh, I would, you know. Uh, I think, um, so, I mean, that, that's really the, all I have to say.
Did you say something to that?
I was, um, not, well, well, we know that, um, on the surface, we know that kids become withdrawn, they come, they become sad, they feel worthless. Um, we know that there are things that, uh, on the surface that kids are, uh, symptoms that they have from being exposed to trauma. But I would say even in my own son's case, um, my son was ac- actually accidentally shot by his own friend. His friend was trying to shoot someone else in the direction of shooting, and he shot my son. Um, this kid was seventeen years old, all the other kids ran, he was the only one that went back for my son. And actually went to the hospital with my son, called me to make sure that I was on my way, but he didn't call me directly, but he called a friend and called me. Um, so what I did for the, you know, just because he cooperated with the police, which none of the other kids would be willing to do. He cooperated, um, now I'm different from other mothers. Um, other mothers would want that kid to get locked up for as much time as possible. I've heard what he should, twenty-seven years old, he got, he should've got fifty, you know? Well, to me, I figured out, I found out, this boy was actually calling me from jail, just because he just wanted to know that I was okay. And he, he just, there was just some things that he did that showed me that this boy had some sense of remorse. Um, and so to me, he, he didn't ask me, could you call the prosecutor, could you talk to my attorney? Never once, all he wanted to do was to call me to, to share a memory of his friend. And when I walked in that courtroom, he had his head bent down and he was crying. He was, he was weeping so hard, and I don't think he understood the consequences of what he did. Um, but at the same time, I called the prosecutor and I said, don't sentence him without me being there. I want you to reschedule that date. And they said, ma'am, you want me to reschedule? I said, yes. They rescheduled the date and sentenced him without me being there. And they did it on purpose.
Yeah.
I didn't know it was intentional, because they did it for another mother who couldn't be there, and they did a teleconference from her, and she lived in Florida. So that she could face her son's killer. But they didn't do that for me, and I live right there in Tacoma. So the trauma that he experienced, number one, not only did they go outside the standard sentencing range, they went higher and gave him more time. Which I was going to come and ask that he get the lesser end of the sentencing range. Not that I felt that he should be, go free, but I felt that he should get the lesser end of the situation. Number one, because he cooperated, number one, because if he did not hand it over, they would not have even connected him to that crime. He could've walked away, but they would've never known he did it. And because he did that, I felt that he should've gotten the lower end of the sentencing range. But they didn't take into account the trauma that he was experiencing as a person who shot his own friend. You know, that didn't even matter to them. Only thing that mattered to him was, was to them was that they got another score on the book, you know?
He's gone.
He's gone, he's out of here. And so, yeah, and, and then they went to him and told him if he even tried to appeal it, that they would, they would charge him with other shootings. Um, so, so he didn't even try to appeal it. I mean, but that's, no, they don't, they don't care.
Can you have to say, say something? And, and right before you say something, we got a few more hands, I'm gonna do, I got one here, one there, one there, one there, that's gonna be our last one. And then we're gonna close with the panel, with the closing remarks. Uh, Patrick will be the last person on the panel to make a closing remark. Excuse me, and then we'll have Gregory Davis come up and, uh, do a dismissal for us. What, after you, go ahead.
Um, first of all, I've watched my mom get beat up every weekend. I mean, she's get beat down, she's a tiny woman, but she would bounce up every time, but she never allowed us to get, get away to help her, um, how to defend it. Um, as I grew up as a man, I watched other women, just, I mean, I've seen so much fatality on women, it's, it's a shame. Um, I was married a few years ago, and my wife was fighting against me. Um, she was arrested for domestic violence. Um, my daughter, she grew up in a household where I had to defend her, you know, she'd catch me, she'd, she would attack me, my daughter stepped on my chest, she didn't care. You know, my daughter was six weeks old, she bounced, she bounced, left her, she was breastfeeding, my daughter couldn't eat formula, so I had to go out and get a steroid. A friend of mine gave us breast milk, but during the time that she was, we was going through this process, I kept calling the police for, because I needed protection. I didn't even have to go to therapy, uh, because I couldn't sleep, I was afraid, I didn't know if the woman was gonna kill, the poison man was gonna go on. And the therapist told me that they're gonna report me to CPS because I couldn't protect the child, and they was gonna take the child away from me. Um, what I'm saying is, is that we can grow men, I've seen young men go into this system for D V. A lot of times, like she, like one of the sisters said, there's no services for young men who don't wanna fight or hit another woman, you know? All through the whole process that I went through, there was no one there for me. You know, I went to, I went to, um, the Y W C A for counseling, because it was only, they only have services for women. There was no service for men who had to deal with, or go through that type of ordeal. And the system generally look at you as being somebody weak if you allow someone to beat you down, a man. If you let a woman overturn, I mean, that's, police told me, oh, you could've restrained her. Okay, restraining in Seattle, I don't know about other states, it's no, that's D V. I could've went down, you know, and would've took her, and I had a teenage daughter I was raising at the same time by myself during that. So she had to, my daughter had to grab the woman, hold her off to protect me. So that's the trauma that my daughter had to deal with. And my baby, she couldn't even deal with noises because of all that was going on, so I had to isolate us, ourselves for three years just to get her able to get out, you know, go out, so she can give herself. So there is some problems in our justice system to where, and in our community, to where we look at these young men, our black young men, as being aggressors all the time. They're not always aggressors. I'm not an aggressor, I don't, I don't beat up a woman because I watched my mom and other women go through that. I, I despise that kind of stuff. It's not right to do that, you know, to hurt someone, and it's not love, you know, which a lot of people seem to get confused. But my, 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 my thing is, is there are young men out here who were, who are trying to avoid those situations, who wind up restraining or whatever, going to the system. Even my little cousin was getting a phone call from the girl while he was in, in the county, and they was, um, recording it, and he got extra sentences because she called him. So the system is not set up to protect white men in, in the D V, it's just another way to get some brothers locked up, unfortunately.
And are you seeing that in the, are you seeing that in the courts now, where there are more reported, uh, cases of being, being, uh, victims of domestic violence?
I, I have about, I have one case where it's a male who's a victim of domestic violence right now. It's an older man, he's about eighty years old, and the woman's about fifty, and she kept him in the house for two days, beat him with broomsticks and, and, and all kind of different stuff. Uh, it's just kind of a really, uh, it's an outlier, but for the, for the most part, I would say most of the cases I have are mostly between, uh, very, very few cases that deal with men. But I would agree that, uh, when those, when those cases do come along, and sometimes you, you, you're wondering who, you know, who's the, uh, who's the aggressor and who's not? That's really a question that it really, uh, comes up often, so I really commend you for having the restraint and having the knowledge to know that, man, even if I tried to restrain her, that I might be the one that's, you know, ends up being charged with a crime, which is unfortunate. But that's, that's kind of the way that it happens. So I think that you have the, the self-control to be able to do that, but not everyone has that. And so, uh, I think that you do get people, uh, who get caught up in the system who should not be there. Uh, but it doesn't take away from the, from the fact that there's a lot of people in the system who should be there, you know, who do beat on women. Uh, who do, uh, commit violence against our, you know, sisters, you know, that is a reality. So I don't wanna, I don't want us to forget about that, that that is a real thing, that I think, I deal with day in and day out, are women who are being abused by their intimate partners. And their kids are watching it, and their kids are learning from it. I mean, that is a reality, so.
Oh, I can give you the closing remarks.
Um, I just wanna acknowledge you, brother, as well, because I've talked to many, many men on domestic violence hotlines where they were being abused and they had called the police and they were being evasuated because it's like you're supposed to be a man. So why you need to call, plus you need to be able to handle that. But, but in this state, there are, this is a women and children's state, and the laws that are in place does make it very easy for men to be prosecuted for domestic violence, whether they're the aggressor or not. And working with young women, I see a lot of very likely pissed off young women, and they don't mind hitting pause on people. And I'm talking about men and other girls, and they do it on a regular basis. So that's why when I do the work, I went to schools in the community that I do, is we're trying to reduce violence, we're trying to prevent violence. We're trying to help them understand, like, you gotta communicate better than that, because they don't mind flipping a pause on teachers, students, family members, they don't mind doing it. And they do it on a regular, and the quote that's funny about it, which we haven't really discussed, is how the media plays a role in that. Because they don't mind, y'all seen them videos where they're beating the smile at each other, walking up to somebody's door, and as soon as she opened the door, she's getting beat? Yeah, they do that, yes. And so that's an issue, you see it happen, had a situation last year, um, senior girls getting ready to graduate, and they come through courses really well. Um, they text to put her on Facebook, we bout to get it in, and forty kids were missing from three of the surrounding schools, Rainer Beach, South Shore, and South Lake. And we're about to school fighting, a couple of my students didn't get to graduate, why? Because they had to get it in, when they have been doing their distorted justice piece and making amends and figuring out how to deal with their issues without violence. So violence is, and, and it is a part of this society, we need to just wrap our brains around it. We live in a very violent country, right? That, that, don't have, they don't, we get gun control, we, we about our guns, and violence is what it is. But I think that our community, we take a big hit in terms of the fact that every time there's something that happens violent, we're the, we're the poster child for violence. Like we're the only ones hitting, committing crime and, and being violent. The next thing I wanna say is this, and I'll be really quick. Um, domestic, we are, black women next to Native American women, um, have the most, uh, rates of domestic violence homicide nationwide. So, so we know that women do die from domestic violence more than, than any man has in this, in this country, but we do know that women are violent as well.
I'll go say, feel free.
So I'm gonna be real brief, and I was gonna speak because, um, you know, it's like, you don't know how to show up at these kinds of things. When you grow up in this neighborhood, you don't know, should I show up as a kid who grew up in the neighborhood, speak from parenting and violent world, from being a kid? And what, you know, worked for me or didn't work for me and my family? Should I show up as a youth, that I work, I'm the executive director of a boy's girls' club? Should I show up from what I'm seeing every day and where the lack is? Should I show up as a therapist, a therapist by train, say psychologically, this is what I think? But in growing up in this community and all the work I've done, from government to working with kids, there's a couple of things I think are, offer us solutions for us to think about on how we can make a difference. And black parenting in a violent world isn't just about, you know, black kids and families, it impacts all races that are here and not here. But, um, there's a couple, someone said earlier, poverty, and in that black community in particular, there's multiple things, health, all these things, and we're fighting for all these different things that we believe in, our reports was, if it's sickle cells or high blood pressure, we want second chance programs, affirmative action, what about education? But if you peel back the layers of everything, what, at the root of it is really, in my opinion, is academics. And that if we were able to give, have an ac- academic setting and be able to give our young people the education that they need, they won't have to rob, cheat, steal, lie, and do what they do to have the self-esteem and to give their means met. So that's why I would say that the academics is core and fair and how we can give more close, responsive, responsive education, um, solution there. And the other thing is, you know, help, we have trauma that's untreated, and trauma causes brain damage, and brain damage leads to violence. And so if we don't treat the trauma, and trauma, and with trauma therapy and things like that, then it ends up where we have these issues happening. And trauma manifests itself in forms of A D D, so a lot of times our kids get diagnosed as A D D when really they have untreated trauma. So those are just things for us to think about, and to think about lobbying the legislature for resources and laws that really will help reform the, you know, health system so that our kids get services.
So as a community member and, uh, like now a social worker, I try to just go through a lot of things. Um, and it's just interesting how I see how some things are well attended and some things are underattended, and we don't really mix. Um, just recently, our Presbyterian Walk Away Day, um, for young girls to walk away from the negative things affecting them toward positive things, and it's kind of fascinating. But this Saturday, four to six, I'm gonna do a little plug, I used to play soccer with a young woman, Ryan Othello, in Oakdale, and, uh, her daughter was recently murdered in a drive-by. You guys probably heard about that, uh, over in Kent. Um, and so they're gonna be gathered at Westlake from four to six, and this is what it says. As everyone knows, my daughter, Malia Miracle, was murdered and gun violent on April sixteen, two thousand fifteen. I'm putting this rally together so we can come together and stop gun violence, hashtag, and also to have justice for Malia. So if you have lost someone in gun violence, please come out and support posters, pictures, t-shirts, or even just your presences. Seattle, we have to do better, please share, 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 hope to see everyone, thank you. So these are the type of things that are happening, and you just said, like, we're wearing a good shirt, we're on our neck and t-shirts. I was debating if I would be supporting a t-shirt to this event and all, but we really should be wearing love and hope. And I think it would be awesome if this powerful group of people and others came and supported that, because I know there are gonna be a lot of young people there, and I know they do love them. Um, so we need to bridge that gap.
You can give yourselves a hand. And then, uh, and then give a hand to our panel as they give themselves a hand. And then we'll start off with Devita and we'll, uh, finish up, and Patrick will have a few words before we bring up Gregory Davis. Again, before that, I won't have the mic again, but I did wanna say, thank you all for coming out, thank you for your comments. Um, I think it was important for Patrick to hear that, uh, which is why we did it this way. Uh, they did it a little different in Baltimore, but I think what you guys had to share is gives him enough information to take back to, uh, Washington, D.C. And share that there are a lot of things. and share that there are a lot of things that's happened in Seattle and that Washington DC should be a part of what's going on in Seattle. And, and I think uh, uh, Stefan said earlier, he put out Dan Saddleberg's email address. We need to get on our computers. We need to make sure that we're sending emails about things that's going on, things that we're concerned about. Questions that we have uh, uh, want answers to. And as well, Patrick will give us to the, the email to the White House. Uh, I think it's fatherhood.gov, but he'll speak more about that so that we can have the information so that we can send in questions and answers uh, for stuff that's happening in Seattle. Thank you, Devita.
Just closing remarks.
Yeah, just give some takeaway.
Okay. Um, I guess, I don't know, I just kinda wanna piggyback off of what Heidi was saying and um, that academics is the most important. And I, I agree that academics is, is important. Um, I believe in education, history and culture. You've got all the different things that kids need that we think are um, important. A lot of times I'll say education is not enough. You know, history and culture is not enough. Um, opportunity is, intentions is not enough. Um, a lot of times we say, "Well, you just give them a job, you just give them education, that ain't enough." A lot of times we give them jobs, we give them education, and they still get to the campus and start selling drugs when they get there. So, you know, to me, uh, um, you know, the biggest thing is, is, you know, we had the saying, you know, you can take the boy out the hood, but you can't take the hood out the boy. It's, it's, what is it that has gotten into their system? You know, what, what beliefs, what attitudes, what they could behave, what they're giving messages have they adopted and bought into? And how do we deprogram that and get them to adopt new values? And some of those new values is number one, is that there's nothing more valuable than an individual's life. You know, change begins with the individual. They have to want that change, self-motivated change. They're all changed. Um, and so, I don't know, um, but you know, one of the, the biggest work that I do is not just commemorating the lives of people that, of the young people that we have lost. Um, I don't want these kids to be nameless and faceless, cause pretty much they are. Um, you know, if they're black and brown, if they die from a, um, a, a, uh, gang violence or from drug related crimes, they're just unremembered and unnoticed. And um, and because we associate that with them being bad so they deserved their death some kind of way. I don't know what that's about, but this senseless uh, death and our, and our collective silence and inaction and advocacy is what bothers me. We can go all the way across two countries to New York and everywhere else to protest about racial profiling and, and everything else. But when, when we have kids in our own neighborhoods that are dying and being found in dumpsters, we just, again, the pop, 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 we just, we don't even respond. And, and, and that angers me. I'm sorry. It just angers me. And so, the, the, the biggest thing that I'm doing with, or my aim with the McCandie Project is, number one, is to commemorate these lives. Put a face to the problem. If I continue to put these children's faces, because they are not all bad kids. We have kids that are straight A students that are being murdered and found all over the place. And what are we doing? It's just another kid that just got killed. He's probably doing something he wasn't supposed to be doing. He shouldn't have been in that alley. What was he doing at three o'clock in the morning? You know, that's the first thing that we say. And I think if I put a face to the problem, if I keep, if I keep showing them these faces, um, you know, and, and I've gotten support from Pete Carroll from Abeter, Seattle, who said, "I don't wanna talk to the mayor. I'd rather talk to some moms that wanna get on the ground. How much money you need?" So I went for a check to do the work that I'm going to do. And what I'm going to do is I'm gonna go into these schools, I'm gonna go into institutions, and I'm going to try to do exactly what I did when that lady go, she left. Um, helping them to understand aggressive behavior, helping them to um, understand empathy and feeling the anger management. All this stuff I had to learn myself. And so I said, "Well, I can get the ground under it and do it before they, they leave the institution." And from somebody who has experienced those same type of things, that they're not just a mom, but other young people empowering, um, other young people. So, I went in for that.
You know, I would say that uh, there was someone earlier talked about, and I think about it in general, a hand. Uh, uh, talked about that it, that the, the movement has to come from the people themselves. And that if you wait on the King County Prosecutor's Office and the criminal justice system to change, you're gonna be waiting a very long time. Uh, because it is a slow process and it is a slow go. And so I would say that uh, you know, that movement has to come from what you guys are doing, from what, what Devita's doing. I mean, that's amazing. I mean, that's really going to make some radical changes in people's lives. I, you know, the thing that I can offer to you is to say that, you know, I, I am a member of this community and I work in that system model and to be, to, to listen, to be heard and to share your voices with those who are in power. Uh, to let them know. I didn't, I mean, I, I've never heard the story about this young man that was found in dumpster. I mean, that hurts my heart. You know, I wanna go find out who this is, who that is. And those, those stories need to be shared. And so, uh, I, I would hope that um, that you, you know, it's unfortunate that we feel so alienated from our systems and so uh, uh, separated from them because they are your system. You pay for them. They come from your taxes. I mean, you pay my salary. When I stand up, like I said earlier, I represent the state of Washington. I represent everyone in here. But yet it's not reflecting the vision and values of the community. So where's that disconnect coming from? So, uh, you know, the last thing that I have to say is that, you know, the difference, and I'm raised, I didn't, I didn't have a dad who raised me. But it was other people that stepped up, you know, to make me who I am today. Other mentors and other leaders in the community stepped up. And so I just, I, and I, and I know that that's what's happening here and I just wanna encourage you to continue to do that. Because that's why I'm here. That's why I can stand up and I'm, and I can say I'm an attorney versus saying that I'm in jail uh, or dead. It's a huge part of the community that helped to support me. And so I just appreciate just being invited here. I appreciate, I mean, I learned here more than, I learned more than I feel like I had an opportunity to share. Uh, it was really more, I'm educated, uh, I'm built up, I'm encouraged by what I'm seeing in this room. Uh, so I just thank you again for uh, for inviting me. Uh, thank you.
Um, so I just wanna kinda close um, with a little bit of my personal background. Um, so I am from Georgia and um, so I grew up in a household with both my parents. Um, but my sister was a victim of sexual assault at the age of thirteen by one of her teachers. Um, and I was in that school as well, so it was during that time that I kind of first learned a little bit about violence. But it was, you know, that hushless violence, right? Nobody ever talked about it. I knew something was wrong. Mama would be crying all the time. My sister didn't wanna go to school. Then I, I would go to school and I would get bullied and told that my sister was a bad person, um, ruining our teachers' lives. And so that's kinda how I came to like, learn about violence. And nobody ever talked to me about it. So when I started college, I made the conscious choice to go to therapy for myself. And I've been doing that ever since and it's kind of, it's like we consider ourselves, how do we help our kids with this trauma? But have we helped ourselves first? So, the very first thing I did was I had to start helping myself before I could help any, anybody else. And I have four nieces as well as a nephew who were growing up, you know, in the same, the same things, right? So I was like, I have four nieces. My sister was a victim of sexual assault. How do we protect her kids as well as our nieces, right? And I realized that we had to start talking about what we had so we could get, get, what we were going through, what. That meant for us, for I could even understand the trauma that may come from what's coming. So, I mean, I do recommend that everybody, if they feel like there's some type of trauma that they're still trying to work through, to, to, to seek those open spaces where we can. Cause it makes you a little more vulnerable and it makes you able to open up to the kids in ways that they can see too. That you experience the things and you share with them. And once you start sharing with them, they will share everything. Like she said, they will share, share, share. So thank you all for being here today.
Um, I was, I'll close first by just, again, thank you, Terrence. Y'all give my hand for one more time. For being a real champion.
Yeah, and right before you say that, do me a favor. Because when he called me, I had to call the mayor and we didn't acknowledge the mayor Gregory Davis earlier. Because if it wasn't for Gregory Davis, a lot of you guys wouldn't have got emails and we wouldn't have got this space. And so another person who champions uh, the city of Seattle and the Raider Beach community, uh, let's give Gregory Davis a hand.
So, it's, you know, to be noted that you have brought us from the east out here to Washington State. Uh, personally speaking, um, this is a conversation that is personal to me. I grew up in a home where my father was there and left when I was fifteen. And so for a kid who professionally now is a social worker, is doing this for a living, this is personal. Um, I remember payday with a check for sure and him taking it out on my mom. I remember days where him being drunk and wanting all of us to do all sorts of things to make him feel better. I remember that. And so for me, this is part of the solution. Uh, in my life where turnaround was possible, there were three things that I attribute to that. And I know that there are a bunch of broken people out here. When I say out here, I mean in the world. Um, for me, it's three of us. One of those is my faith. Um, I've walked into many prisons. I've walked into many communities where men are broken. And those that find salvation, when I say salvation, mean change, is part of that has been their faith. The second element that to me is personal in my life is my family. When I say family, I'm a Patterson. It may not be a Patterson. It could be someone that cares about me, who I call family. And then the third thing, this was something she spoke about, um, I think is a word that we didn't mention, but is key, is forgiveness. And not only forgiving you, but forgiving myself for some of the things that we've done. And so as we continue to go from place to place to have this conversation, our hope is to continue to hear, but also to share what we've learned. I'll close by saying this, if you wanna stay in touch with us, um, on the web, our email address is info@fatherhood.gov. Info@fatherhood.gov. If you're on Facebook, you can find us at fatherhood.gov as well, and the same on Twitter. Um, everything we're reporting goes back to Washington DC and then eventually gets to the White House. The goal is not to put them to the profile that we're doing the work, but is to create a space for change. And so I just wanna commend you each for being on a school night. Um, I wanna thank again Terrence and his family for hosting us. And just continue to encourage us each to stay together. I believe that not one of us can do this, but it takes all of us to make this change. So, thank you again.
Um, so how many of you have um, taken a trauma-informed care course? Or been oriented in trauma-informed care? Okay, that's good. So one, one of the tips that it talks about is you don't ask the person what's wrong with them. You ask them what happened to you. And one of the things that that's gonna require is for us to take time to, to kind of have our lives interrupted, to, to take that time. I know that's a challenge because I look out here and see you. Each and every one of you, I know you're doing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten things. You got, you got a list. There was reference earlier about what we gonna do tomorrow. Fear not. These brothers and sisters gonna be working tomorrow. They gonna be working on the issue, working on the challenge. And I know that. I know that. And so I just wanna recognize you and acknowledge you all for being here this long. There are a couple of other people I do want to, to recognize. We had some media going on in the house tonight. Um, and I wanna thank Tiara Thompson for our photography. Let's give her a hand. She's about to prove the photo. Is here. I also wanna thank Ken Gilbert here. Ken is a social media tech for Rainier Beach Action Coalition and, and one of the brainchild behind our Freedom Net program. And so what he was actually doing was live streaming through Periscope. And so we're using social media in our organization to train young people to use it on the positive tip so they can change the perception of their neighborhood from the inside out. So that program is called Freedom Net. And so, thank you, uh, Ken. Um, I'm gonna put my brother on blast. He told y'all that he was retiring. So if anybody's looking for a board member, come here, girl. I throw it right here. Don't forget to, to take you up on, on that. And I'll just say that uh, we are having our Restorative Justice Planning Committee meets uh, in this building on the second Tuesday of every month. So our next meeting is October thirteenth uh, at six thirty. And like I mentioned earlier, we are looking to bring restorative justice peacemaking circles to um, this neighborhood uh, because we do realize that is one of the ways to kind of impact this violence. And so what I'd like to do is just leave you um, here today with a, with this proverb. And you know, we talked about the challenges that, that we experienced. We talked about the dehumanization and, and how we need to switch that. And so I, I would just say to you, just because a log is in the river a long time does not make it an alligator. So thank you very much um, for gracing us with your presence here, hanging out with us for this long. Uh, we extend blessings to you. Um, and just wanna thank you again for the work. Uh, keep, keep, keep moving, keep moving, keep moving. Alright, goodnight.